Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Dewar.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Littrell.
I would like to give it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an agenda before us? Are any additions, corrections, changes?
We approve the agenda, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And we have a couple sets of minutes for October 20th work session. Any changes, corrections, updates?
Move to approve the October 20th work session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 20th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And then we have the October 27th regular meeting minutes. Any changes, corrections, updates to those?
Move to approve October 27th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the October 27th minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Prescheduled speaker, Mr. Turner.
Good afternoon. Evening, brother. My name is Gil Turner, Director of Aviation at Dayton International Airport. Here to talk to you about just an update on your greatest asset we have around this community, the Dayton International Airport. So what we're doing and what we're trying to do to attract more airlines, reduce our costs so people don't have to drive two hours to Cincinnati or two hours to Columbus. So we want people to use the Dayton International Airport. So I want to give you just a quick update on what's happening and what we're doing. So who we are. We're a small hub airport. So really, the airport, FAA classifies airports as hubs. So you got non-hub, small hub, medium hub, and large hub. Dayton falls in the classification of a small hub. Roughly any airport that has like 500 to 2 million passengers, that's a small hub. 2 million to 10 is a medium hub. 10 and above is a large hub. So we fall in the category of a small hub. And we are the third largest airport in the state of Ohio. We don't count the airports in Kentucky. So there's, we're the third largest. It's Cleveland, Columbus, and Dayton. And the other three is Akron, Toledo, and Youngstown. So but Dayton is the third largest airport in the state of Ohio. So we could connect to about 55% of the population in the state, within the country. So within 90 minutes. So I have a slide that'll show you. I'll connect to it a little bit later on. But just want to give you an idea that from Dayton, you can connect to 55% of the population of the US within 90 minutes. So we have a large facility, roughly about 4,000 acres that we utilize for, we have several businesses that operate on the airport. So we'll talk about a lot of our tenants that we have. Also, we have a great runway infrastructure. We have, our longest runway is 10,900 feet, 150 feet wide, which can accommodate 747. And just, and our shortest runway is 7,285 feet. And just to give you an idea, the airport in DC, Washington DC Reagan, is only 7,100 feet. So our shortest runway is longer than the, their longest runway in DCA. We have 111 employees that operate at the airport. We have a full service, police department, fire department, airfield maintenance, planning, engineering, and finance department. We operate about $36 million operating budget. And we are owned by the city of Dayton, but there are no local tax dollars that support. So we are self-supported. We are enterprise funded. So all my revenues that I generate, that's what pays the bills at the Dayton Airport. So mainly parking, landing fees, concessions, and leases. And just to give you a little bit of size of what's going on, when I started over 23 years ago in the aviation business, so at the airport, there's over 50 airlines. Through consolidation and mergers, now there's only about 12 that's left right now. So Delta, American, United, and Southwest, those are the big four that control about 3/4 of the industry as far as the passengers that are flying around. So and since the pandemic, most of them have recovered. But Dayton, we saw that in between Cincinnati and Columbus. So a lot more service went into Cincinnati and Columbus. And Dayton kind of like, okay, you know, we're, you know, kind of left behind a little bit as far as the recovery. So we're still not fully recovered from where we were back in 2022. These are the cities that we connect to. We have four airlines that operate out of Dayton. We have Allegiant, American, Delta, and United. So from those airlines, you can connect to 11 direct cities. Eight of those cities are major hubs such as Dallas-Fort Worth, Denver, Chicago, Atlanta, Charlotte, Dulles, Philly, and DCA. So those are major hubs. So that's what I'm talking about. You can connect to 90%, you know, in 90 minutes, you can be 55%, connect with 55% of the US population. So Allegiant is a local carrier. They pretty much go to the Florida destinations, Fort DeGordre, St. Pete, and Sanford, Orlando. And we consider our casman area. We know there's about 1.4 million people that live within a one-hour drive from the airport. So that's what we call our casman area. And it goes far north is Lima, Ohio. Far west is Richmond. Far east is London, Ohio. Far south is Middletown. So that's our casman area. There's 1.4 million people. So that's enough to have decent air service in Dayton. And that's the story that when we go talk to the airlines, we tell them about people and companies that live within our casman area. So that's the story we tell. There's some industry challenges. Costs have increased, especially labor is going up 4%. So we're seeing airlines now that are changing their business model. More people want those business class seatings now. So you see Southwest now, for the first time, they used to have the cattle hall. You line up and get on the aircraft. No more. So now they're reconfiguring their aircraft now to have that business class service. And you can select your seat now. So and a lot of other airlines are doing that, adding more of that business class type seating in aircraft. So you're seeing that. Seeing a lot more delivery. Boeing is finally delivering a lot more aircraft. Airbus is delivering more aircraft. So airlines now getting more fleet to add more service. There's still a lot of mergers going on with JetBlue, Pops Frontier, Alaska and Hawaii merger, and now Spirit in bankruptcy. So also, government shutdown. Everybody knows that's still going on. Possibly a deal on the table. We don't know where it's going to get, go anywhere yet. But it's impacting us. You see 40 of the major airports were told they had to reduce capacity. So we're not one of the airports. So we have seen a whole lot of impact. But we do fly into some of the airports that are impacted by the reduction in service. We are an economic engine for this region. We believe we contribute well over a billion, have a billion dollar impact to this community. Over the past eight years, we've created well over 9,000 jobs, starting with PNG. Now we have Spectrum, Crocs, Chewy, SNC, Joby. All these companies now are located around the airport. So we are definitely an economic engine for this region. Again, SNC. SNC relocated to the airport about four years ago. They started out with one hangar. Now there are four hangars. Three of them are operational, and the final one will be operational early next year. So they have a huge contract, a $13 billion contract with the federal government to modify Boeing 747s at the airport. So this is a huge contract, big for the region. Every hangar of the, each hangar represents about 100 jobs. And good paying jobs, not, you know, minimum wage. These are people that are making probably, on average, $100,000 a year. So the picture you see on the left-hand side, that's a concept. We want to do more development. We're working with the state of Ohio now to, for the All Ohio Future Funds, to develop, redevelop that side of the airport. That's a concept, what it will look like. And what we want to do is get that site ready for more companies like Sierra Nevada to come and build hangars on that site. Joby, we were just at their facility today. They took over the old post office building at the airport. Now they're building components for their aircraft, their electrical vertical takeoff, landing aircraft. So this is going to be really huge for the region. And once they become fully operational, they want to start building the aircraft in Dayton. Right now, they're just building components of the aircraft. So once they become fully operational, get all the FAA certifications done, they want to start building their aircraft right here in Dayton. So they're talking about well over 2,000 jobs. So we're excited to have them on our facility. More improvements to the terminal. So our jet bridges, that, this is a connector that connects from the terminal to the aircraft. They're getting old, about 25 years old right now. The FAA allows us to, they fund up for replacements. So those, we're replacing about nine of those jet bridges. Concourse B was, as you know, we just recently spent about, the last five years, spent about $44 million upgrading the front of the terminal. So that's a huge investment. We want to continue that on into the concourse. So the next one is Concourse B. It's about $10 million that we want to invest into that concourse. The state has given us $2 million already. So we're going to continue to make that investment into the concourse. Future projects, so some, my strategy is to sort of keep our costs low to the airlines. So I don't want to spend a whole lot of money. So what I'm doing now, if I can't pay for cash or through a grant, we're not going to do it. So these are some of the projects that we have on hold for now. Bagged Claim, Carousel, Concourse A. But as funding become available through grants or cash, then we'll do these projects. Our parking. We just, we built a garage about 15 years ago. Hard to believe. I'm investing about another million dollars to sort of upgrade it to just do some maintenance on it. If you've flown out the airport recently, you probably saw, you know, the second floor partially closed and the top floor partially closed. But we're, it's just time. 15 years, it's time to start doing some maintenance on the garage. Also, we have EV charging there. You can reserve a spot. We have a company called Metropolis that manages our parking program. So now, instead of you having to roll your window down, take a ticket, enroll in the program, drive up, the system recognizes you, you know, bills you, and bills you when you exit. You don't have to even stop. So it's kind of really cool systems. So in our day program, you can get rewards for parking at the airport. New amenities coming to the airport inside. So you've probably seen the old Maxx and Irma's there, probably the last Maxx and Irma's, you know, in the state of Ohio. But we're working now with our new concessionaire who's coming onboard the first of the year. They're going to bring in, replace the old Maxx and Irma's with a warp wing restaurant. The Dunkin' will be, right now, it's a kiosk. So we want to upgrade that to a full-service Dunkin'. The old Great American Bagel, that's going to change to a Buckeye Pizza shop. So that's really cool. So we're excited to get a refreshment. And this concessionaire is going to invest about $2 million into our airport. Also, up in the concourses, the 12th airway, that's going to be updated with a 1903 concept. And also, in Concourse B, the old MVP restaurant, that's going to be replaced with a Gym City provisions concept. So really cool. Community involvement. The Dayton Airport, we're involved in the community. We host Honor Flight annually, three, four times a year. This might be the last one because there's not too many more of that surround it from that era. So but there might be a few more. But right now, this, we host those three or four times a year. We get involved with AIRCAMP. We try to get the students, young people, involved in aviation. We get them out on the, on the airfield. We take them up in the tower. We get them over to the, our firehouse. We show them, you know, what it's like just to get into the business. And our military welcome center, so we have that facility. Just as you come into the lobby, we have a military welcome center where military people can get away and just kind of rest, just like the old USO was there. But we, we host that now. And also the Air Show. So this is something really cool that we do annually, the Air Show. We host it on the airport facilities. And, you know, it's just a great show every year. So, back to why I'm here, is that we really need, we want to make a case for more air service. So we know that our air service is inadequate for our local travelers. So we want to make a case to the airlines. We want to incentivize the airlines to come to Dayton to add more service. But we need help. We're working closely with the chamber to try to come up with new strategies to attract airlines, to attract air service. So a lot of, I'm restricted by the FAA for what I can do. I can, I've done everything. I'm at a limit to what I can do. What I can do is lower the racing charges. We're at the bare bones. Trust me, we're at bare bones. I can waive landing fees for two years. That's the max. I can waive gate fees for two years. But that's pretty much it. You know. But other airports are using incentives. So Chris will talk to you about that a little bit later on. But we want, you know, this community to have better air service. To do that, we've got to get out there and talk to the service. And we've got to get people to use the local airport. But it matters. We want people to start, you know, even if you have a connection, to use the Dayton Airport. Because that, when we go talk to the airlines, they're looking at data. They see who's traveling where. But if you, they see that most people are driving to Cincinnati, driving to Columbus, they're going to go, wow, we need to add service. But they see that you are flying out of Dayton, using your local airport, then they'll say, okay, we need to add more service. We're trying to make a case. We have to make a case. Every time we talk to them, they're looking at, you know, what, looking at the data. Someone's looking at some 22-year-old kid, you know, looking at data. You know, that's what they're making decisions on. When they go to their bosses, they're going to say, well, hey, you know, people are not using the airport. They're using Columbus. So they're not going to make, it's hard to make a case. But we want people to use our local airport. So we're doing a lot, you know, the Dayton Airport, you know, is an easy to and through. You know, you can park in the garage, walk across the street, you check in with your gate. Go to the, get to the checkpoint, probably 10, 15 minutes, you're at your gate. I mean, you can't get any quicker than that. I know people, you know, I, when I travel a lot, I kind of just listen to people talk. And they say, man, this airport is so easy, easy to get through. And people, I don't even know them. I'm hearing them say this. Or I hear it all the time, how easy the airport is. And that's one thing that we talk about. And we want to keep going, keep that moving, that customer experience. From the time they, they drive up in our parking garage, to the time they come into our facility, to the time they depart, and time they come back and they can get their bags, you can be home in half an hour, an hour. Not two hours, three hours, four hours, you know. So having this airport as convenient as it is, you know, we want to keep that. We want to improve that. But we need more air service. And we have to make a case to the airlines. So, how can you help? Again, fly from Dayton, tell others why to fly from Dayton also, and participate in the minimum revenue guarantee. That's, Chris is going to talk to you about a little bit. So anyway, I'll bring Chris up, and he can tell you a little bit more about the MRG program.
Thanks, Gil. I appreciate it.
Good morning. I'm Chris Kirschner, President and CEO of the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you guys for having me. I get to make the hard ask so that Gil doesn't get in any legal trouble. But first, I want to say thanks for having us. Thanks for getting us up early in the agenda. It's my new favorite city council because you guys have us on early in the agenda. So I really appreciate that. But one of the, one of the strategies we have in place is how can we incentivize the airlines? We know that we have about 1.5 million people in our catchment area. And that is, that makes it good and bad. That means that's 1.5 million people that can fly out of the Dayton International Airport, and that's 1.5 million people that can go to three other airports, either Indianapolis, Cincinnati, or Columbus. So we have to make a very strong case to get those travelers here. As somebody who works on economic development every day in the 14-county region that we're in, I can absolutely tell you, one of the stipulations that numerous businesses have is where are our direct flights and where are they going to? It doesn't matter what the city is. It could be Beaver Creek. It could be Springboro. It can be Sydney. The companies look at where they have access to their customers, their clients, or where they need to travel for their company. And if they don't have access, some companies take you off the list, by the way. It's that easy. If they're saying, hey, we need to fly to Dallas. If you don't have a direct to Dallas, we're out. We're off the list, and they're on to another community. So I see that economic impact. So my job is to try to figure out, how can we help incentivize those airlines? And I do it from an economic development perspective. I don't get paid by the airport at all. I'm here from a chamber economic development mindset of what can we do to get more companies in this region? And one of the main things we can do is get more direct destinations. So what we've done is establish a program with Jobs Ohio in Columbus, where they will match dollars that we raise with a four-to-one match. So for every dollar we raise here locally, they give us that four-to-one match. So for every $200,000 I can raise to incentivize an airline, they give me $800,000. That goes into our foundation. We have this 501(c)(3) foundation attached to the chamber called the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce EPI, Education and Public Improvement Foundation. That's a C3 foundation. Funds go in there from the community. They are restricted for air service development only. So it's all I can use those funds for. And we use those funds then to incentivize airlines. We underwrite the risk so that they will come into our community. Because one of the biggest challenges we have, excuse me, is airlines want confidence that we can fill their planes. And of course, it's our job to tell them that we can fill the planes. We have the demand. But sometimes we have to underwrite that risk. So by underwriting that risk, we establish this minimum revenue guarantee that says, here's the floor. If you come into this community with new air service to destinations that our business community needs across the region, we will guarantee you this amount of money. Now, our hope is that we don't have to hit that guarantee, that their planes are full, that we never get to that guarantee. But if we do, we have the funds in an account to back it up. Again, it's a four-to-one match. So it's a pretty good return on investment. $200,000 locally gets us $800,000 from Jobs Ohio. We used that fund twice now. We've used it once to recruit United Airlines direct service to Denver, was been very successful. Those planes have been about 92% full. They were so successful, they upgraded the plane to a larger plane. So we're now flying a mainline aircraft out of Dayton for that Denver flight because it was so successful. But we had to use, put a million dollars on the table to incentivize them to come in in the beginning. And now we're seeing the return on that investment. We used it also for another airline called Avelo Airlines. Avelo Airlines had some operations issues, and they ended up pulling out of a lot of markets. So that one wasn't as successful. But we were able to claw back some of those funds, put them back into our air service development fund that, so we can use them for a, for a future airline. And now, we're talking with a number of different airlines about new service. But we need to have the dollars in place, bless you, so that we can put those offers on the table and hopefully secure them for long-term investments here at the Dayton Airport. So officially, we are asking City of Beaver Creek to consider a contribution to the air service, the minimum revenue guarantee, our air service development fund, which is at the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce's Education and Public Improvement Foundation. So this is a charitable contribution. The funds are restricted in that foundation. And we're asking City of Beaver Creek to consider a $25,000 donation to that fund. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
I have some questions. Chris, thank you. And Gil, thank you very much. There is no airport more easier, like you said, than the Dayton International Airport. And I just flew to Dallas Thursday, came back yesterday. I was saying some prayers for, for the flight, but not a hitch, not a hitch at all. And the direct flight is a super nice option to have from Dayton. The parking app is beautiful, and I like it a lot. And my wife flies to Chicago once a month, every, for a week. And that direct flight is, is very nice, too. So what you're doing there and the improvements you've made there are just easy and fantastic. And so I, I second everything that you said about the airport. And I hope that we can maintain its vibrancy and viability in the region. My question is, for your minimum revenue guarantee project, do you have a goal? I mean, we've got, you've asked for 25 from us. But what's your goal?
Our goal is $600,000 from the community, which gets us 2.4 million from Jobs Ohio. So we have a $3 million total bank that we can ask, that we can put on the table to try to incentivize air service.
And can you just speculate what that 3 million means? Is that one, two, three more opportunities? How does that equate?
So generally speaking, and there's no set rule of thumb here, but in our experience, a million dollars generally gets us a destination. It got us a Denver destination. It got us an Avelo destination. We are not going for just one destination, though. We're going for multiple destinations. So we're hopeful that 3 million would get us at least three new direct destinations. Again, don't hold me to it. But that's, that's the idea. That's what we're aiming for.
And what are you hearing from the business community as far as destinations? What are we missing?
Yeah. More, more service out west. So right now, Dallas and Denver are our furthest west destinations. So business community wants more hops west. Las Vegas is very attractive to the south. Tampa has been a very attractive destination. A lot of businesses in the greater Dayton market doing business in that area. Also, more east coast, Massachusetts, Boston area, even some down in North Carolina and South Carolina. So those are probably the high-demand destinations, which we keep data on that. And we communicate that to the airlines. Because what we don't, we have service to some of the popular leisure destinations. But we're really trying to do this from a business perspective. Because the leisure will come. Once we get the business, we just need to get the business destinations in place.
And does that mean attraction of new carriers or just additional routes from the existing ones?
Both. So with United, they were already in the market. They just expanded their service in the market when we had the Denver service. But we are talking to airlines that don't even operate in this market as well, trying to get them to enter in the market. So that would be great to get a new carrier into the market that they could start to invest in our community.
Well, I used to fly Southwest a lot when they were in Dayton. But it became a little bit more of a pain when they, they pulled out. But I'm glad to have a Legion.
We would love to redevelop the Air Trans model that we had here before Southwest bought them, where we really operated as a central point for a lot of their flights.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you.
You're welcome. I should note, too, as long as we're in, as long as we're here, the Dayton International Airport is not seeing any service reductions because of the shutdown. So while there may be other airports in the Ohio that are on that shutdown reduction list, Dayton is not. I would also add, too, there's, there's two motivators here from a time standpoint. Cincinnati Airport is going to face significant access issues because of Brent Spence Bridge, Brent Spence Bridge construction. So between 2026 and 2031, Brent Spence Bridge is going to go under construction. So it's already hard to get to that airport from the north. And once that bridge construction starts, it is going to be significantly challenged. Additionally, Columbus Airport is going through a $2 billion renovation, which has completely made it chaos at their airport. So that's happening between 2025 now and 2029. So we have a window here. We have a window of the next four to six years where we could really attract people to fly out of Dayton and capture back some of that leakage we've lost to other airports. Because there's circumstantial things happening that are going to drive people to want to look at Dayton.
Do you feel like that gives us some leverage here?
It does. Gives us leverage. It gives us opportunity with the airlines, but also with the passengers. So that's why we're running this campaign now, to get this money in the bank before the end of the year, so we could start to secure these new flights to new airlines.
I have a question. I know you stated that we're not seeing any reduction in flights. Are we seeing reduction in passengers due to the government being Are we seeing reduction in passengers due to the government being shut down?
There is some, especially in the DC area. So government travel from the base, you know, to DCA, so that flight has, you know, gone down quite, maybe about 20%.
Okay.
Reduction. Normally, you have anywhere from four, one to four flights per day. That's been going down to like two to three, so.
This is an incredible presentation. This is very informative. Was unaware of those opportunities that you shared, and so I'm glad that you did. As someone who has traveled, I think, to almost every single one of your nonstop destinations, with the exception of the ones down in Florida, I love the Dayton Airport. I love everything about it. It's quick, it's easy. The only thing I don't love is that when I have to check my bag, I have to get there super early just because I need to check my bag, and then I have to go through TSA. But it is, it's a fabulous airport. I love that you can walk from the economy parking lot, for those that don't know that secret. It's incredible. And so I'm a big advocate of trying to get more carriers and more destinations. I think this is a great opportunity, so thank you.
Not many airports we get to garage to gate in 15 minutes or less. When you can park at the garage right in front of it, go right through TSA in five minutes, stop at Warped, we can get a sandwich on the way, and then get to your gate all in 15 minutes, that doesn't exist anywhere else.
Or the economy parking lot in 20 minutes, maybe. Like, I mean.
Here's the other thing, too. The price for parking, it doesn't even matter what type of parking, economy, the long-term, even the garage, it, compared to other airports, it is a bargain.
It is, it is. Because I use the walking lot. If I ever fly through Columbus, I'll use that walking lot, and it's triple the price for me to walk.
Number one priority for our members at the, through the, in the Chamber is saving their time, right? So they're willing to pay a little extra money if it saves their time, because they know how valuable their time is. And when you have to travel to another metro area to go to their metro airport, it takes time, it takes money, and you lose productivity. And that's what Dayton delivers. That's one of the reasons why we worked with the airport to establish the Business Traveler Center at the airport. If you ever use that, you should. You guys just, when you go into the airport, right next to Dunkin', on the right, you'll see something called the BTC. It's actually an old TWA lounge, for those of you who remember TWA Airlines. They shut that down, and when they got bought by US Air, we took it over and made it an amenity for our business and military community. So it's a private lounge, Wi-Fi, snacks, refreshments, meeting rooms, TVs, for you to go in and sit while you're waiting for your flight. All you do is just go in, put your name and email in on the iPad, and you're in.
That's after TSA?
That's right after TSA, right next to Dunkin' Donuts.
Interesting. I had no idea that's a.
It's a private lounge for our business community.
I will say, I am unashamed to admit, I have rolled into the airport as my flight was boarding, and still got through TSA and to my flight in plenty of time. I mean, you cannot, cannot make it up. But you cannot have a mortgage in the airport, and as Chris said, I will spend more money if it means I can go direct from Dayton than go to any other airport, and I do not go to that airport down south. I will only go to Dayton, Columbus, when I have to. But this is just, my husband and I were talking about it the other day, this is one of the most prized gems of the Dayton region, is this airport. It's so well-run, and I hear people come all the time from work, and they say, man, the Dayton Airport is just so nice and so easy. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's a point of pride for our community.
Yes, absolutely.
But we've got to continue to invest in it. Other airports around the state, like Toledo, are about 80% of their pre-COVID, I'm sorry, they're only at 20% of their pre-COVID flights. So they've lost 80% of their travel. We're, we are committed to ensuring that doesn't happen to our business community, but we have to continue to fight and continue to invest.
I think you raise a really valid point, too. I don't, I think that we take it for granted. I mean, I take it for granted, it's the greatest thing ever, but I've never thought about everyone else not really thinking about it, because it's just so easy, it's so convenient. And so these types of presentations are definitely helpful. Thank you.
I noticed you don't go to LaGuardia anymore, so you don't have a direct flight to there?
Yeah, unfortunately, Delta and American, they both pulled out of LaGuardia. We were working, they were flying CRJ-900s there, which is a 70-seater aircraft, but they can only fill up about halfway, so mainly 40, 50% load factors on that, those flights. So they tried for at least, oh God, about seven, eight years to increase that ridership on that flight, but we just couldn't get it up to the standards that the airlines like to see. They like to see at least 80, 90% load factors to make a profit. But, so we're looking at other options, and this could be another way, maybe to get into like Newark or somewhere, a place else like that, you know, but we're still working on it. But we're kind of upset that they pulled the service, but we understand it's a business decision, because there wasn't enough passengers on a daily basis to support that flight.
Yeah, I didn't fly it every day, but I used to fly it a lot.
I know, a lot of people love to go there, but we just couldn't get enough people on a daily basis.
Well, I didn't love to go there, I had to go there.
We're fighting for it, though. It's one of the biggest questions I get the most. And so we're actually, we're having some conversations with the airlines, because American Airlines eliminated LaGuardia service out of Cincinnati as well. So there's really nowhere in Southwest Ohio to service to the quality that I've been working with.
That's interesting.
We're making a case.
I really miss Air.
Strong case to make in this office.
I miss Air Tran. I used to fly Air Tran all the time.
It was great.
It was great. I did a lot of stand-up flights, I'd fly in at night and leave in the morning.
Big planes.
Yeah.
And that's what, we're looking at that type of model with some other airlines, too. I hope to come back and go to share good news with you guys here in the next three or four months.
Our budget meetings are later this month. Do you need an answer by the end of the year? Is that your?
Yeah, we need to have the funds in place, not, we don't have them in place, we need a commitment by the end of year. So yeah, if it's later this month, that's fine. Most business contributors that we're talking to, as well as local government contributors, are giving us those answers here by first of December timeframe, so that works fine. And what we're looking for is really the commitment now. We have a commitment form. Once we know you're committed, then we're able to make commitments with the airlines.
Yeah, we'll discuss it at our meeting. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. It was good information.
Great presentation. Thanks.
Okay, PUD 25-3 has been tabled, and will probably come back November 24th. So we'll move on from that one. Ordinance Resolution of PUDs, ordinance 25-22.
Ordinance 25-22, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council establishing five new funds, specifically the Senior Center Trust Fund, the Wordinger Park Long-Term Care Trust Fund, the CI Beaver Hall Long-Term Care Trust Fund, the Miscellaneous Parks Fund, and the Police Trust Fund in conformity with the federal and state laws and generally accepted accounting principles.
And this is a second reading. Is there anything else from staff? Nope. Have a motion.
Your Honor, I'd move 25-22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-22. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance 25-23.
Ordinance 25-23, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 9362, 9566, 9616, 9772, 1817, and 238 of the Beaver Creek Traffic Improvement District Ordinance. By updating and amending the improvement fee, amending the transportation system improvement fee schedule for District Number One, amending the fee per trip schedule for District Number One, and amending certain other provisions of same ordinances.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council. Just a brief history on the traffic impact fee for the City of Beaver Creek. It was first approved in 1993. Since that time, the city has been collecting the fees to go into a fund, that we use that fund, to in turn construct capacity improvements within that district. The original, the 1993 ordinance established all the parameters that we still use today as far as the district boundary and how the fee structure operates. We did an update in 2018 to the, to the traffic study. The significance of that is, we took all the vacant planning areas within the impact fee district. We looked at those, assuming full build-out of all those vacant planning areas. We applied those trips to the city roadway network and identified a series of improvements that were needed once everything is built out. The cost of those improvements is the basis for the impact fee, where the ID would be to collect the fee from the person building the home or the shopping center. That goes into the fund, and then we would have sufficient monies theoretically to build those improvements at some point when they're needed. It's important to note, the fees that are collected can only be used to improve the capacity of the roadway system. We can't use those for resurfacing or maintenance purposes. The last update to the, to the fees was in 2023, and the ordinance requires every two years for council to evaluate the fees, which is why we're here tonight, to take a look at the fees that were approved in 2023, to see if we need to update those fees. In looking to see if the fees will need to be updated, we took actual cost information from several recently completed roadway improvement projects, and we applied the updated cost information to the improvements that were recommended in the 2018 study. I should note, too, that we assume 50% grant monies when we do this overall program, so, which is pretty consistent with what we see in our five-year capital plan, as far as that 50% ratio, city funds to grant funding. So when we apply that, we come up with recommended fee structure based upon the overall, again, the actual project cost information and the roadway improvements. And just for your information, these are the improvements recommended in the 2018 study. And you'll see, if you compare our five-year capital plan to this drawing, you'll see a lot of overlap between the two, where over time, we're trying to phase in a lot of this Again, using the updated cost information and calculating out what the fee should be, you can see, I have the 2023 fee structure on the chart, along with the recommended 2025 fee increases. And we're looking at about a 14% increase in the fees from 2023 to 2025. And again, this is important in order to collect enough funds to someday be able to construct those improvements, I showed on the previous slide there, so. And happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, there's an ordinance, so if there's anyone who'd like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Moore, have you heard any feedback from developers? Any other stakeholders?
I haven't, but we'll make a bigger effort to reach out to them. We haven't really honestly reached out to a lot of developers here lately, but we can certainly do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, I'd move 25-25 to a second reading.
Second.
25-23.
23, excuse me.
You have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-23 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 25-24.
Ordinance 25-24, an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the City of Beaver Creek and adopting new personnel rules and regulations for the City of Beaver Creek.
Hello, good evening. It is that time of year where HR typically comes forward to ask you all to consider updates to the employee manual. It's required at least every five years. Since I've been here, we've at least had a couple of minor tweaks every year, so this list might look a little bigger than other years, but I assure you, some of it's just clarifying language, some of it is additional language, maybe tightening some things, and then some of it is just best practice language, like some of the FMLA language that's come from different employment updates and legal seminars that staffs attended. So I wanted to run down a non-exhaustive list of these updates that would be effect on 1/1 of '26. To begin, in the introductory period section, we're just looking to really explain that if an employee is gone for a significant amount of time, 30 days or more during that 180-day window, that management, the supervisor reserves the right to extend that probationary period. And again, that's meant to evaluate a new employee in a new position. Hard to do if maybe they're out on an extended leave, so it just gives us the ability to extend that. There's some language changes and clarification for purposes of prior service, counting either for the transfer of sick time, which we allow, or for the calculation of vacation accruals. This is a practice that we have been doing, but this adds language that we would receive that verification from an employee's previous employer within 60 days. This kind of cleans up the possibility of things being retro and having to go back and make new calculations. This is also something that HR has on the form that they provide to the new employee, and something that they cover verbally in onboarding, so this just really clarifies it and puts it in writing in the employee manual. We also have some clarifying language about what part-time employees are or are not entitled to with regard to some of those prior service credits. Another change in the vacation section is that the minimum increment can now be used in six minutes or one-tenth of an hour. It had previously been hour increments. Staff pointed out that in sick leave, it's allowed to be used in a tenth of an hour, so let's make it consistent. So that's that change. There are a couple of changes to the holiday section. We are eliminating some legacy sections regarding an exempt employee being required to work a holiday. We suspect that this is holdover language from when different groups of employees within the city in different facilities had different holidays. Now all of the employees are on the same holiday schedule, and this particularly mostly applies to 4th of July and park staff. And practice has been that, flexing that time for when they work on 4th of July is just handled within the department, so we just took that language out. We've also got some clarifying language with regard to employees being off the day before and/or after a holiday. It had already stipulated that they needed basically advance approval for things like personal leave or vacation, which would be approved by their supervisor. But now it also stipulates that if it's not advanced approval, like for sick leave, for instance, it would require the city manager's approval and/or may require a doctor's note. Again, that kind of tries to tighten in the ability for employees to call off after a holiday in an unplanned way and kind of cause a disruption to work. And then the final section update in that holiday section is that we had been allowing part-time employees as a perk and a benefit and a recruitment tool to receive four hours of holiday pay. We've stipulated now that that's for part-time employees who work an average of 20 hours a week. Again, just trying to tighten down that optional benefit that we've chosen to offer part-time employees. We've also updated the funeral leave section to expand the family relationships. There's two categories of leave in there. You would either be entitled to five days or three days, so we've kind of actually expanded that benefit for the five-day category. And then we've removed the language that funeral leave cannot be used for days following the service. We've just come to realize that there are still things being handled with regard to the death of a family member that might take place after the service. There's been some additional language and some technical language in the FMLA sections, such as specifically naming the certification of healthcare provider form and clarifying that it must be completed by the employee and the attending healthcare provider. We've also kind of updated language. We actually went from must language, where the employee must provide reasonable prior notice, but there was no definition of what reasonable prior notice is, to should provide 30 days' advance notice when applicable, and of course, if not applicable, just as practically early as possible. Then the final two updates to the manual are in the other leaves of absence without pay section. We just clarified that necessarily that section wouldn't apply, you wouldn't have to have exhausted leave if you had another form of insurance or another form of benefit, like short-term disability. And then we've added language to the smoking and nicotine section to prohibit smoking, vaping, and nicotine use in city parks. Again, that reflects the recent change we made to the parks rules, so now that's consistent. There is one administrative fix we will have to make on the final page of the ordinance. It was pointed out that we, it was, a 2025 date was a holdover from last year's legislation. We'll need to correct that to 1/1 of '26. So that's the only administrative change that we'll have between now and the second reading, unless you all have questions or changes.
Thank you. This is an ordinance, so with our public input, if anyone would like to come forward and address this, you stick, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have Seeing none, we will close the public portion of it. And any questions from counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 25-24 to a second reading.
Move it to a second reading.
Yes.
Okay.
Did I say that? Okay.
You said approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to move it to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. I was getting ahead of myself there. I was getting ahead of myself there. Resolution 25-31.
Resolution 25-31 to authorize the application for the 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department.
This was approved to go to a second reading, but it wasn't supposed to go to a second reading. So all we need is a motion to approve.
Your Honor, 25-31, move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution 25-31. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Decision item, third quarter financial report.
Hopefully everybody received the third quarter report. Couple of general comments. We're done with property taxes for the year. Overall, property taxes came in 2.5% more than the budgeted amount and actually 4.6% more than what they did in the previous year. 4.6, of course, is kind of a false number because last year we saw our property taxes decrease 1.7%. We've had a lot of conversations about having a large taxpayer that had a delinquency that was settled in the first half of this year that actually applied to the previous year. So, you know, that, that 4.6% number is because of that decrease that occurred in the previous year. Otherwise, we were about on par for that about 2% increase in property taxes that we usually get from new construction. We also highlighting just a general comment for affects a number of funds. Other revenue, it always comes in more than, well, I shouldn't say always, in the last several years, it's come in more than what we budgeted. We budget very conservatively. It's made up primarily of refunds and reimbursements. So with our property and liability insurance, when a planned year closes, there's no more claims for that year, they refund that money that we paid for that year. So last year, two planned years closed, we got a reimbursement for monies that we had paid in those years for potential claims. Same thing, workers' comp, these amounts are really difficult to predict, to project. We, we just really don't know if a claim year is going to be closed in a given year or what workers' comp will refund. So, you know, those numbers tend to come in much higher the last couple of years than what we've budgeted. Within the general fund, revenues are performing at or in excess of their benchmark with two exceptions. Planning and development fees are at 68% of the budgeted amount. Those are a little more difficult because it all depends on how many projects do you have and what's the size of those projects? So, you know, you're kind of sitting this year saying, okay, what's going to be built next year? You know, we know about the housing developments, but we don't necessarily know the timing of those housing developments or any commercial constructions. So the other item is probably a little more concerning because it's an ongoing issue. Franchise fees continue to decrease. We're losing about 6% or 7% per year over the last three to five years. That's a continuing decline that we see, we've seen for the last couple of years. Expenditures are well within the, the 75% projection of the budget. Probably the only significant item is capital is significantly less than the budgeted amount. That's because we included a, a money for a grant. $500,000 was appropriated. We didn't end up getting that grant, so that money is still just sitting in that appropriation line item. Within the street funds, and Mr. Landham and I had a conversation the other day of how we're hopefully going to clean this up maybe in, in the future, but one of the problems we have with the street grants, and this is, all of this impacts all of the street funds, is that we apply for a grant and say it's a 40% match on our share, but the grant's 60%. Well, we budget for all of that in the year that grant is approved. That grant isn't actually going to, or that construction isn't going to occur possibly for two to three years down the road when we actually get that money. So when you look at either capital outlay or the grant revenue within these street funds, it's, it's kind of misleading. So like I said, hopefully we'll, we'll come up with something that kind of streamlines that and makes the budget and the actual a little more straightforward in that our local share will always be budgeted in that current year because we have to appropriate to reserve that money so we can encumber it. But on the state share or the federal share portion, you know, maybe finding another way to account for that outside of our actual street operating funds so that it doesn't look so odd. Park levy, outperforming all their benchmarks and expenditures are within those benchmarks. Again, revenues are, are coming in great in parks, but, you know, we'll talk about golf also, that their year is shortened, you know, they're, they're not operating necessarily on a full 12-month year because a lot of their programs take place during the summer. So revenues within the park levy fund have been performing great. And as I just said, with golf, another great year so far through September, they're, they're at 102% of their operating revenue. They exceed last year's actual numbers at this point by 4%. Number of rounds are up 2%, resulting in an 8% increase in greens fees because some of the changes they made without, you know, actually raising the base rate for, for golf, but changing what hour or what times of the day pay what rates. So they're able to take a 2% increase in number of rounds and get an 8% increase in their revenue. Again, 75% benchmark, a number of their expenditures do exceed that, but that would be expected because you don't have a lot of part-time salaries and things at this time of the year, especially on a day like this. So, you know, they, they exceed that benchmark, but they're still within the limits. The one exception is food and beverage expenditures exceeded the budgeted amount, and that's due primarily to rising food costs, but it also, the, you know, the number of rounds go up, you're selling more food. And so, you know, you, you have kind of that offset. Final thing I would bring up is interest income. It's trailing what last year's number was by $129,000, but we've already hit, we're already received over the $1 million that was budgeted for this year in the general fund for interest income. The reason for the decrease, quite honestly, is just declining interest rates. While we have invested some of the city's funds in long-term activities in order to lock in higher rates, 78% of our money is still sitting in the equivalent of a money market account, Star Ohio or Money Market. And, you know, they are paying current rates and we have to keep that liquidity, especially given none of us really know what's going to happen next year with property taxes. And I don't want to be the guy who said, well, let's enter this five-year investment and then have to sell it early because of revenue shortfalls coming forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question?
Move to, move to accept the third quarter financial report.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the third quarter financial report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Appointing two council members to zoning code steering committee. Mr. Burkett, do you want to talk to us about that?
Good evening. As city council may be aware, the, the land use portion of the zoning code and land use plan update is, is starting to get closer to the end. I've had a steering committee meeting since, I think it was around February or March is when we first started meeting. The fifth and final steering committee meeting is next Tuesday. But I'm, as we finalize the land use plan, we're going to transition over into the zoning code portion. It's a little bit different type of work, and so I wanted to see if city council, I mean, we were looking to get two members of city council on the steering committee for that. It's pretty nuanced, a lot of in-depth reading of zoning code. It's fun for me, but not for a lot of people, I think. I live and die by the zoning code. And so I find it interesting, but I know, I know it's not for everybody's personality. So I just wanted to throw it out there. Ms. Schwartz and Mr. Littoral have done a great job on the steering committee so far. And so no decision has to be made tonight, but I just wanted to throw that out there and offer to anybody who would like to work on that committee. I, I envision it to be about the same amount of commitment as the land use plan once a month, maybe for the first three or four months, and then we'll spread them out as we, as the work comes in and not force a meeting when we don't have enough information for that meeting. So I just wanted to throw that out there and give you guys opportunity. Thanks.
If there's anyone planning to do that, please speak up or we don't have to make that decision tonight.
I have no problem with staying on.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I, not as excited about it as probably you are, but yeah. I don't have a problem with like policy and, and codes and stuff like that, so I think I'll be okay.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? I guess we can appoint him at this point.
Yeah.
So I just need a motion to.
When do you need, when do you need people?
And when does it meet? When does it?
Really, the, no official meeting has been set up yet. I would anticipate probably sometime in February is when we start. The land use plan, it's going to be ready to go soon, but I want to bring it to council at a work session, and the next available is going to be in January, and then I'll go through planning commission in city council in January, February timeframe. But, but the zoning code is going to be based on the land use plan, so I don't want to go start too much into that until we know what the land, have a pretty good idea of what the land use plan is going to be approved. January, February timeframe.
We might, we might want to wait until we get our new council members, you know, January and talk to them.
Well, I'd still like to do it.
I don't have a problem. I'm just saying, we got two others.
Well, no, if, if we got just one, that's fine. We can, we can wait. I mean, it's not critical, right? Okay, so, yeah. Well, let's take care of one of them right now.
I'm happy to move to appoint council member Littoral to the zoning code steering committee as one of our two.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Councilman Littoral on this committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we just have one more to look at, and we'll look at that as we go forward. Council time. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone, I'm going to just steal Pete's thunder, about the budget planning session next week. I would encourage people to come out and listen and listen to the discussions that we have and observe kind of how the process works. I mean, we go line by line through the entire budget, and so I think it's incredibly informative for people to see where all of our tax dollars are going. I also would encourage everyone to attend the Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow if possible. It is a moving ceremony, and now that it is going to be moved indoors, it'll be much warmer, so excited about that. And then the next thing is there will be a Region 14 meeting next week, so I should have an update on that at our next meeting. And last, I just want to congratulate everyone on their election season. Congratulations, Councilman Duer. Congratulations, Sarah, and to Zach. I think that you guys are going to have an incredible council next year, and so excited to see all the work that y'all are doing. I also am incredibly pleased that the library, public health, and the schools, all, all the levies passed. And so just want to thank the community for their support on those incredibly important resources. That's all I got. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littoral.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the MBR piece, and I found out why I have a problem with saying this. Is I was on, I was in crime prevention, sheriff's office for a long time, and we, we had the Miami Valley Crime Prevention Association that I went to all the time. So I keep getting those letters mixed up. The Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission meeting. We just, they had discussed grants had been awarded and lots of talk about the age-friendly community still and monies that's been handed out for, for those type of endeavors. There was a, a presentation about the Plan Healthy Miami Valley that they've been conducting surveys for. It kind of fell right in line with our planning that we've been having the meetings at the steering committee for, and it was interesting to learn that they had actually done 34, they, they had sent out 119 different, to different jurisdictions for survey and got back 34 responses from them. And they, they, the top interests were downtown corridor developments. That's what everybody was wanting. Everybody's wanting to know about pedestrian oriented design, being able to walk everywhere, healthy communities, sidewalks, but they emphasized on the fact that they're tired of sidewalks that go nowhere, you know? There, there are no destination sidewalks. It's sidewalks where you can walk past a, a shopping center, but there's no feasible way to get to the stores, you know? You just have to, like you're a car, walk in the entrance where the cars go, you know? Things like that, that don't make any sense. And, and I started thinking to myself, do we do that? You know, we have sidewalks that go right past businesses and there's no path to get to the business that's going past. And I don't know if that's something to think about in planning in the future in the sense of if you have a business and it's got a sidewalk out front, there should be a pathway in addition to the, okay. Also, they had, which I thought was interesting, was the, their website design, they're getting ready to do a complete redesign of there, and I was surprised they budgeted for this $45,000 for a website redesign. I don't know if that's, I was hoping Katie would be here. That sounded like a lot.
It sounds cheap.
Oh, it is?
Super cheap.
Wow. That sounds like a lot. Well, they put a max on it. That's $45,000 for the redesign. They also, Miami Valley's, they're also working on an AI internal policy that they feel that should be developed by probably everybody, and they're going to offer a template and some guidance after they get it developed in the coming months, which sounded like a really good idea. Upcoming meeting will be December 4th with a, actually an actual planning and zoning workshop on December 5th.
Right.
They will be also, there was one other point that I wanted to remind everybody of is they're going to hold a workshop for the, for the healthy communities at the Fairmore Library for public input on the 18th of this month between 12:30 and 1:30.
The healthy communities or Safe Streets?
Safe Streets, Safe Streets, I'm sorry. I didn't have it written down here. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the sheriff's office retired employees open house and go through the jail. This is the second time I've been through it. It is so badly needed, and this is a guy that came from the old sheriff's office, and you wouldn't believe the, I'm jealous. I feel like I should be allowed to take home a chair or something from in there or something for all the things that we put up with when we worked there. It's, it's a beautiful place. So they are going to have a, an official ribbon coming up soon, and I don't have the date written down.
The 19th.
It's the 19th. Yeah, so, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the blessing of reading the anniversaries, so. Two of those as they come up on the screen. The first seven are all from the police department. Greg Steller, two years. David Denlinger, two years. Trevor Hawley, three years. Tanisha Carroll, three years. Christopher Brownlee, 13 years. David Majersak, 24 years. And Dan Kroll, 24 years. From public service, Scott Skaggs, six years. From public service and engineering, a very own Jeff Mormon, 28 years. From planning and development, Colin Carville, two years. From the golf club, Tylee Gebhardt, seven years. And from finance, we heard from him earlier today, David Graham, one year. So thank you for all of your amazing service to the city of Beaver Creek. We as city council very much appreciate the longevity and the hard work and the professionalism that's ongoing. Want to thank everyone for getting out and voting. Obviously, elections are a lot of significant work and great consideration on the part of the people, and very grateful for the turnout and just people getting to the polls and making their voices heard. and making their voices heard. Had the opportunity to do a beam signing and topping out ceremony at Cedarville University. It's kind of a neat thing where the final beam is put in place of a new academic building, and as faculty members, we got to sign it, and grateful for Dana's, the construction company, and they actually hire a number of engineers from Beaver Creek, so that was good to chat with them. And finally, this is not a sales pitch, this is a thank you, but my most recent edited book is now out, and it's an academic book, so they're very expensive, but I want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve on Beaver Creek City Council. The book is entitled "In Pursuit of Moral Political Leadership," and I've just gained wonderful insights for being on the city council, and just so thankful for this community for the opportunity to serve, and so that's what I have, Mayor. Not a sales pitch.
Thank you. Congratulations. Councilwoman Garcia.
Now, if I do buy one, will you sign it for me?
Yeah, sure.
All right, thank you. Well, as my billboard of a shirt displays, "Happy Birthday to the U.S. Marine Corps, here's to 250 more." My grandfather was a U.S. Marine, so they are near and dear to my heart, and the Veteran Banner Program that we instituted a few years ago is so special and important to me, and I have huge smiles on my face every time I drive by and see a new picture up for the year and the season, so thank you to all the families who participate in that. Thank you for your service and leadership. We appreciate it. And I know we have some Marines and former Marines in the Beaver Creek Police Department, so thank you for their continued service even outside of the Corps. Happy Veterans Day early to all of our veterans. One of my favorite memories serving on council is working with Mayor Stone. He and I had the opportunity to go to the Army-Navy Club, which is a member-only club, and he and I had the opportunity to be invited, and we were just having a drink one evening, and there was a table of three other veterans, and they started talking to us about, you know, Bob Stone's service, and it turned into a wonderful evening, and I'm still in touch with one of the veterans from that experience, so it's been very great. I would encourage everyone to look at Reeds Across America coming up on December 13th. It's something my family and I have been doing the last few years. There are some amazing heroes buried in the Dayton area, some from World War II who served with the 506 Paratrooper Infantry, the Band of Brothers. It is just an amazing point of history. We take the kids, we explain to the importance of the reef laying, the importance of who served, and it's just been a great, great honor to have that in our community. The last thing I will say is I am greatly enjoying the Beaver Creek Police Department app, so if you have not downloaded it, please do so. I get some really good alerts on there, including weather updates. Didn't know you guys were going to do that, so I should have covered my mom's last night when I had the chance, but thank you again for that. Thanks for all your service, and thank you for everyone who voted. I did not think it would be this hard for me to have only five meetings left on city council, but the closer I get to the end, the more I'm going to miss working with the city and everybody up here. So Sarah, congratulations as council member-elect, you're going to have a great team of people around you. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to attend the citizen graduation in the police department over at Senior Citizen Center. It was really neat to hear the stories from these people who really got an inside look at our fine department, and we also had, what, COPP exposure. They were trying to encourage people to join that volunteer Eyes and Ears organization, which is so critical to our police department. Also want to congratulate the elected officials that we will be bringing on board, and I wish them the very best. And then, of course, the Veterans Day, it's already been mentioned. Encourage people out there to come over to Be Hope Church and be a part of that program 2:00 PM on tomorrow, I guess, Tuesday. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of things. I want to thank the residents who live around Shakertown Road. The mayor and Councilmember Curran and I met with, I don't know, 18 or 20 of them a couple of weeks ago to talk about the project, and just wanted to thank them for coming out and sharing with us their opinions about the project, and encourage anyone who has questions about any of our capital improvement projects to bring them to our attention. I also attended the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Long Rage Transportation Plan Public Meeting. It is about all of the capital planning projects throughout the region. They're accepting comments from not only elected officials, but anyone in the community about the transportation plan projects, and you can do that on their website. So it's very easy, and I think that's still open for another several weeks in November. I too want to congratulate Councilmember Doer and Sarah and Zach for running a fantastic election campaign, and look forward to working with, with all of you. And then just finally, thank you to Councilmember Literal for attending the MVRPC board meeting last week as I had to go out of town. Thank you.
Out of Dayton.
Well, I flew out of Dayton. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was able, along with Vice Mayor Bales, we attended a tree planting at Rotary for the Joshi family, recognizing them for their ongoing support of Beaver Creek in the Fourth of July celebration that we have. They pay for our fireworks or enable us to have fireworks for the last, I don't know, 20 years or so. And so we wanted to do something to recognize them that would be long-lasting rather than a piece of paper, so we planted a tree, and we'll have a plaque on that for them. It'll basically be there in perpetuity, or at least until something happens, but I think it'll be there a long time. Yeah. I was able to visit and tour the new Green County Jail, and I agree with you that the difference between the new jail and what the old one was, there is no comparison, no comparison at all. And I know Sheriff Anger's really excited about that whole, whole thing over there. As Councilman Curran said, I'd like to congratulate the graduates from the Citizens Police Academy. I know they spent about eight weeks with several members of our police department, found out just what kind of a department we have. It's very professional, and I think there was really good comments from every one of them that was there, and I encourage when it's opened up again next year, I'm sure it will be sometime in next year if we open it up again, please sign up for it and try to attend. I think you'll learn a lot. Actually, I had the honor of performing a marriage last week here in City Hall. That was kind of neat. That's one of the joys I get as mayor, and it's, I really enjoy doing that, and I've done eight of them so far, and all of them are still married, so that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I too like to congratulate all the candidates that ran for office, those that were successful, those that weren't. I think it takes all of us to step up and, and work for our community. It shows that we have a lot of interest, a lot of people here that care about our community, and I think that's really important. And I know it's not an easy task. I've done it. It's not easy, but it's well worth the time and effort, and it's a little bit better when you're successful, but still, again, it's the fact that you stood up and did that. That was a real testament to you. It's already been stated, the Citizens, our Veterans Day ceremony will be held inside tomorrow at 2:00 at Be Hope Church. We went over, looked at that today, and decided that that was just too much to try to do it outside with the weather and the snow and everything, and Be Hope was very, very friendly, opened up right, said, "Yep, come on in." Yeah, so they're going to provide everything we need, so it's going to work out really well for that. In addition to that ceremony, I'm also speaking with the veterans at the Patterson tomorrow at noon for a ceremony that they're having there, so I'm looking forward to that. And with that, that's all I have. Mr. Landrum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As been mentioned several times, you have the location been changed, so don't look for us at Veterans Memorial, just go across the street. The actual address, if you're not familiar, is 1850 North Fairfield Road, so should be warm and dry. We were worried about, the snow was melting, it'd be slippery, and then maybe turning to mush, and then mud, and it just, it was, I will say this, throughout the years, I know I've been here specifically with the Memorial Day tornado. Be Hope has always been a great partner, community partner, so thanks to them for opening this up for us, for the community. This been mentioned as well, so next week, Monday night and Wednesday night, both 5:00 to 7:00. Right here, this will be an informal, we'll have the tables out, not be on the dais, we'll be out around table as budgets are presented, and as Councilwoman Schwartz said, line by line that we go through painstakingly, but good information. Summer Expo, I know this is, now we got snow on the ground, this is hard to mention this, but I think it was last year was our first time that we tried this, and it was successful, because I think what happens is we have these expos, and when, if we do them in February or March, a lot of these students already have jobs lined up, so we have to get them thinking ahead of time. So in December 9th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at Beaver Creek Golf Club, we'll have, be accepting applications, full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions, as well as paid student interns for various departments. Bring your resume and be prepared for an onsite interview. We'll advertise for this on social media and website and stuff, but first time we're mentioning it, it's just a month away, but we found out by doing it early, we get people before they make too much of plans. And I do wish, I think my father would be looking down now, this is coming up on the one-year anniversary of his death, and he was the biggest, proudest Marine you would ever have known. And so, and he loved Veterans Day as well, so here's to you, Dad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we've reached the citizen comment portion. If anybody would like to come forward and address council on any subject, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. My question is, I looked on the website, and it did say something about the budget meeting. They didn't have a location or a time, so I'd be interested in that, so we can find out what that is. And the other one is, is just to let you all know, and I congratulate all the winners and everything else, there's several individuals that kept getting their election signs taken away, pulled out. So for the next election, everything else, we need to at least put it out publicly and say, where people put it, if it's private property, it's fine, because you're out there in the public area. Some of the signs are being removed, and I just think that we need to let people know that you shouldn't be doing that. So something in the paper or anything along that line, just to remind people that that's to be professional about it, leave those things up there, but you folks need to know about it. But I replaced eight signs for one of my candidates, because they just kept on disappearing and disappearing, actually for two, two of my candidates, but like I say, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. You as well. With that, I would close the citizens' comments portion, and I think we have a motion.
Mayor, I would move we enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the compensation of a public employee or official.
Have a motion and a second to move into executive session. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Literal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes, and there will be no decision coming out of this, so in effect, when we're finished, we'll come back just adjourned, so in effect, the meeting's over. We are in executive session. Sarah.